Welcome everyone to the Shakopee City Council Meeting, June 4th, 2013. Call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. Ms. Weckman, could you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Sherman?
Here.
Counselor Lehman?
Here.
Counselor Clay?
Present.
Counselor Whiting?
Here.
Mayor Taubke?
Here. All stand for the pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Mr. McNeil.
Mr. Mayor, we have two items. First, 4C1, we would request that we delete that for tonight. That's a petition for improvements for Valley Park Business Center. We did not receive the petition in time. And then secondly, with your permission, we'd like to add what would be 7F1, and that would be to consider the extension of the listing agreement with Kubish Realty for the downtown fire station building.
For a term of how long?
It'll be for six months.
Counselor Whiting?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Um, alright, so we, sorry, move on to consent business? Anything that we'd like to remove from consent? Counselor Lehman?
Can we add 7F1, six-month extension of the fire station listing to consent?
Just to clarify, it's a seven-month extension through December 31st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Clay, you had something to say?
No, I just...
Oh, got it. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Assistant Counselor Sherman, Mr. McNeil, could you please read consent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. 4B1 declares forfeited vehicles held by Shakopee to be surplus property and authorized for proper sale or disposal of these vehicles. 4C1 was deleted from the agenda. 4D1 recognizes Kim Weckman's successful completion of the one-year probationary period for new hires and grants her full-time regular status as Finance Department Secretary. 4D2, authorize the staff to bring forward for hire the names of up to four qualified candidates for the position and paid-on call firefighter. 4E1 accepts with regret the resignation of John Daniel from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and now authorizes staff to fill the vacancy through advertisement. 4F1 approves the payment of bills and electronic transfers in the amount of $680,881.53. 4F2 approves amendments to the city council meetings of May 14th and May 21st, 2013. 4F3 approves an application, grants a massage therapist license to Cherry Wiseman. 4F4, 4F5, and 4F6 all relate to the granting of annual alcohol on-sale, off-sale, and wine licenses to various Shakopee businesses. Approval of the applications and issuance of the licenses are all conditioned upon compliance with licensing requirements. 4F6 also weighs the requirement of the section of the city code for global restaurant group during business as Dangerfield Restaurant and Stone Brook Golf Club and the Knights of Columbus Home System are connected to the city's water system. And finally, 4F7, authorize appropriate city staff to purchase 16th additional laser fish licenses from Crabtree Companies for an amount not to exceed $16,283. And 7F1 was added to the consent agenda, and that authorizes the extension of the listing agreement with Kubish Realty for the downtown fire station building for a period to expire December 31st, 2013.
Thank you very much, sir. Any discussion on those items? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number five, recognition involves citizens by city council. Is there anyone who is here tonight would like to speak on an item that is not on our agenda this evening? Thank you. Alright, move on to item number six, business removed from consent agenda. There was none. Item number seven, B1, Shakopee Midewakaton Intergovernmental Aid Agreement. Chief Tate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight we are asking council to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the Shakopee, Midewakaton, and Sioux community. The proposed agreement is for three years, starting in 2013. The agreement reimburses the city for police services we currently provide. In addition, the police department will provide liaison time to enhance our working relationship with the community. We will do this by moving a patrol officer to investigations. That person will be the primary contact or liaison to the community. We do this on some level right now with our BEAT structure. However, we believe that this will take that to the next level. An investigator will spend some discretionary time during the week doing community policing on community property. We think up to about 10 hours a week, depending on call load. When they are not doing that, they will be doing, based on priority of calls, they will be investigating Shakopee cases. We typically get between 50 and 70 calls for service on community property during the year. Many of those require follow-up investigations. This person will be a one-stop shop and handle all community-related cases. Internally, our caseloads for investigations are high. This is where the work is right now in the police department, and this additional investigator will help with those caseloads, especially with all the technology and everything involved in some of these complex cases that we're doing right now. We think this really benefits the police department. This is going, there's going to be a learning curve with this over the next three years. As time is spent out there, call loads increase or hopefully decrease, we'll determine how much time this person spends out there. But again, I'm excited where this can take us. Costs of adding an investigator and their equipment are covered under this agreement. I want to stress this does not require or add any new staff, and there are no, so there are no negative budget impacts. As mentioned, this is for three years. The total reimbursement over the three-year term is $250,000. Attorneys for both parties have reviewed this agreement. There is a defined, in the agreement, conditions for termination, and I don't think it's all that often, especially in law enforcement, that we have a win-win situation, but I do believe that is the case right here, and I do believe long-term this makes us a better community policing, police department. Bill would like to say a few words, maybe?
Mayor and council members, my name is Bill Riednicky, the Shakopee Sioux Tribal Administrator. I'm just here to, first of all, thank you and your staff for working on this. This is a project that we've been working on since about October of last year, and I'm happy to see that where we are. I wanted to also note that one thing that has been working very well is that we do have our own compliance officer, similar to a CSO to a city. He doesn't carry a weapon, but he's been in close contact and close coordination with the police personnel that have been working in the Shakopee area. He's been with us since November of '11, so he has some time, and he has a good working relationship also with the city of Prior Lake and the Scott County Sheriff Department. So I think with the relationship, I think it will be good for both the city and for our community, so that's it.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Lehman?
Bill, I've got a question for you. Is it your plan for the three years out that you're going to keep your security forces that you currently have?
Currently, we have one person that's on, that does compliance for the community, and his role is very similar to like the CSO, that his role is to deal with ATV-type issues, you know, upcoming, we'll deal with some fireworks issues and those type of things. So he works well with the community residents, and then, but he also has that same relationship with the police officers. It's been a position that's been in our budget, and we've had someone on board since, I think, 2008, 2009, and we've found that that position has worked well in our community to keep those little neighborhood issues down.
And for the big tourist dryers, you're keeping that security?
Yes. Yeah, we have probably about a force of 250 people that are involved in security.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Whiting?
Well, I think it's great that this is coming together as a good partnership, and hopefully this new position, if we, the body passes this proposal, will work well with the compliance officer and that Prior Lake officer. Now, as far as I'm concerned, Chief Tate, as far as I'm aware, most of the area that this officer will be patrolling or doing investigations in is residential area. It has nothing to do with the casino and most of the business areas of the community out there. Is that correct?
That's correct. The only other, I guess, major area would be the Powell Grounds.
Okay.
But it's primarily residential.
And there's no issues between sovereign nation-state as far as policing, police force, or any issues there?
No, we've, you know, we've been doing this for a while, and we know, I think we've got a good relationship out there in terms of how we handle calls for service, and we've never had, knock on wood, any major issues if we have to arrest someone. And ordinance issues are difficult sometimes, but with their compliance officer, I would say that that's gotten much better over the last few years.
Thank you.
Counselor Clay?
Thank you. It states in this agreement that under, item two for term and termination, it's a three-year term. Either party can terminate with 30 days' notice. It doesn't specifically say whether it needs to be for cause or not, which I'm guessing then means that either party can terminate for any reason they deem necessary or appropriate.
Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct. It just says you can terminate for 30 days, so it means for any reason, if we needed a for-cause provision, that would have, would have had to be in here. In other words, it would have to say 30 days for good cause and then find what that means. But just by saying we can terminate for 30 days, it means that will.
Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Lehman?
And I think that's two-way street, because we can, they can terminate within 30 days also. Mayor, I'll make a motion to authorize staff to enter into the agreement with intergovernmental aid between Shakopee, Midewakaton, Sioux, and the city of Shakopee for the police service.
Second, Assistant Counselor Whiting? Any discussion? I actually had one question. Why is it set up as a tiered structure and not just, you know, 85 grand a year? Why does it go up for those?
Because we give our officers pay increases.
That, that was the starting point for the agreement and what they came to us with.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, chief. Next item is 7B2, also Chief Tate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before I start, I would like to introduce to my right, Jana Grassel. Jana is our Crime Prevention Specialist. She's been with us for a couple of months. She's here because she has been instrumental in helping develop this ordinance, proposed ordinance, and if passed, a lot of the, if not all of the work is going to fall on her shoulders, so she definitely has an interest in what happens tonight. The topic of rental housing ordinances has been discussed off and on here in Shakopee now for, I'd say, well over five years. So I'm excited to finally have a proposed ordinance on the table for council to consider tonight. Past discussions have always been centered around a license program with full inspections, additional staff, kind of an all-or-nothing approach. Tonight, we are proposing a much simpler ordinance, a registration ordinance, which will not require additional staff, nor will, it doesn't require a registration fee. We believe this is fair. Requirements vary based on how much property you rent, and if passed, like we've seen in so many other cities, will have a positive impact on reducing crime in the community. There we go. So tonight, we are asking council to adopt ordinance number 870, a registration ordinance. I will get into the ordinance a little bit more in-depth in a few minutes, but there are two main requirements that we're proposing. First, it would require property owners to register with the police department. And second, the crime-free multi-housing program is a focus of this ordinance. In terms of purpose, it's important to highlight that the purpose of this ordinance is to protect the public, health, safety, and welfare for everyone. This ordinance is pro-property manager, owner, pro-resident, and anti-crime. I also think it's important to stress that this is not a knee-jerk reaction to some recent events in the community. As I mentioned before, this is something that we've been talking about for several years now, both Michael, myself, other staff, and has been a goal of ours for years now. So why do we need a rental registration ordinance? The operation, very simply, of residential rental properties is a business. With that comes certain responsibilities and obligations. We have a number of rental property owners in this city who simply don't care. They are absent or have no training, and this impacts the entire community. It is effective. Statistics and studies show across the board a history of this type of program working, not just in reducing crime, but improving quality-of-life issues as well. It works in other cities. I can't tell you how many of my peers have sat and told me that the number-one thing that has reduced crime in their cities is a crime-free multi-housing lease addendum as part of their rental licensing. I see communities like Burnsville was recently ranked seventh in the nation, 2012 best small towns in America. You see Eden Prairie, Plymouth, Rochester, cities that not just statewide, but nationally are seen as some of the most livable cities in this country. They all have significant rental licensing ordinances. And there is a present need. You've all received complaints, whether they're crime-related or quality-of-life issues regarding rental properties. This is, this is much more though than just one rental apartment complex. There's a sizable amount of rental property in the city, and I do believe it's time we start addressing some of these issues. One of these issues, John Doe is a real person who lives in a fourplexer, and tell him that all of you at some point have heard or received a complaint about. We've changed the name to protect the not-so-innocent here. The owner is disengaged, is not part of crime-free multi-housing, and as you can see, he's been booked 35 times, over 90 contacts with the Shakopee Police Department. That is a significant amount of staff time. I can't even begin to put a dollar figure on how much that's cost the city. Nobody should have to live next to this person. There is a good chance that this person would not be your crime-free multi-housing was implemented. Here's another case from 2012, an incident, and I bring this up to demonstrate that this is a broader issue than just larger apartment complexes. This is a single-family home in town here. The owner rented his basement out, had absolutely no training, was a little in over his head, and had absolutely no idea who was living in his basement, didn't know what to look for, and it turns out this was a significant drug distribution point that resulted in several gallons of heroin being seized out of the basement. Again, I firmly believe the crime-free multi-housing was there. Most likely, it would help this owner either detect this type of thing or prevent it altogether. Ordinance compliance, this is something we've seen a lot of recently, and we've seen it with single-family homes, where we have an absentee owner, sometimes living out of state, and we have nobody that's willing to step up to the plate and take care of the property and cut the grass, deal with the ordinance issues. It causes significant delays in our compliance, a problem that I believe this ordinance will go a long way in helping to address in the future. There are a lot of single-family homes rented that generate ordinance complaints in the city. Now, we have a database in the police department that does track some rental properties. We don't have nearly all of them, specifically single-family dwellings. Those that we do have, we know that, it's a little, I think, over 90. We know that 30% of those have Phase 1 crime-free multi-housing certifications. So looking at it through that perspective lens here, if you started getting all of the rental property orders into our database, that 30% is going to be much lower. And I bring this up because we're talking about why crime-free multi-housing is so important, and I think there's no better, if I can get one slide to stick with you, it's this next one right here. I think it's extremely compelling, and it's why we're here tonight. You see firsthand the impact crime-free multi-housing can have. This is rate. It has nothing, it's not the number of calls, but in the far, in the left column here, you see all police incidents, so that would include medicals. Next is index crimes, so those are the ones that get reported to the FBI, and then drug incidents. We went with rate here, and it's separated between complexes with four or more units and complexes with three or less. We tried to get as apples-to-apples comparison as we could, and as you can see, in every case, crime-free multi-housing is working. In some cases, I think those are significant gaps. We have only 30% of our rental property owners certified in crime-free multi-housing. That doesn't mean that they're all even actively engaged in crime-free multi-housing. So less than a third of our population that's renting can only stop and think, and to me, I look at that as an opportunity in what could happen in the future in terms of our overall crime rate in the city if we're able to get this education be self there. In terms of what is crime-free multi-housing, what we're asking in this ordinance, Phase 1 is a training, it's an eight-hour training seminar. We already do this. We already have these classes, not that often, but we do have them. If this ordinance passes, we would have to step that up. We would have these classes frequently on weekends to accommodate schedules. But it is an eight-hour training that either the owner or property manager must attend. We do charge, I think it's $20 or $25 fee for that, and that covers the speakers and lunch. The ordinance does accept the training certifications from other cities. It's a highly educational, interactive session. We know through our studies with, and conversations with other cities, that there's, it's a big educational piece. There are people in these classes that had no idea they could even do a background check. It also helps our, put a face with Jana's name and open those lines of communication with the police department. Again, this would be required of everybody. Beyond that, Phase 2 is a security, CIPTED is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. It's a class that we've sent our people through. Jana's been through the basic and through the advanced, so she would, she would do these. They're not invasive, they're a survey. And anyone in this proposed ordinance who has four or more units would be required within a year to have Phase 2 and Phase 3. You can see some of the things that are suggested here, or that are looked at, and again, these are recommendations that the police department would hand the property manager and owner. There's nothing in their ordinance that requires the manager or the owner to have to comply or bring those issues, cut bushes, what have you. They're recommendations from the city. And Phase 3 is a, is a meeting with tenants, again, for units four and above. It's a one-year event. Night to Unite does qualify, which I think is a fantastic thing to promote Night to Unite and get more people involved. There is, I want to stress, no cost for Phase 2 or Phase 3. Crime-free, drug-free lease addendum, these are common throughout the country and the metro area. They're very, and we've, we've had a lot of success here in Shakopee with them. Clearly, it lays all expectations for residents. I know a lot of the complaints about crime-free lease addendums, well, this activity's already illegal, why do we have to have them sign a lease addendum? This clearly lays all of the expectations and sets a tone for what, what type of behavior is tolerated in our rental units. Does provide some leverage for owners and managers to remove somebody if they are a problem tenant. And again, it's proven to be extremely effective in Shakopee. There are, there's one property where we had close to 75% call reduction, because they got on board with crime-free multi-housing and the crime-free multi-housing lease addendum. In one year, we were able to get close to 75% reduction in calls for service at that location. I want to stress too, that the ordinance does not say, while it does require a background, it does not say how in-depth that background must be, just that one be done. Whether a property owner or manager denies or rents based on the result is completely up to them, not the police department or the city. And the ordinance does specify that that's for new leases. The crime-free lease addendum, again, if someone violates it, it's up to the property owner or manager to decide if they're going to be evicted, not the police department. Some more benefits of crime-free multi-housing, and this is, I believe, how we create buy-in through this class. You can see a number of benefits. It does improve safety for tenants, managers, and owners. The more stable, satisfied resident, rental base, property's taken care of better. Nationally, again, crime prevention, or crime-free multi-housing has been proven to reduce crime up to 67%. We've seen that eclipse here in Shakopee with certain properties. So it is, it is a measurable tool that has been instrumental in a few of our areas in reducing crime. I think it's, it's important that we teach property managers and residents how to work with the police and neighbors to keep drugs, legal activity, gangs, out of rental property. And then the last bullet I think is important too. This is a community-oriented policing approach to crime prevention. I scratch my head and wonder, why wouldn't... I scratch my head and wonder why wouldn't we do this because there are a lot of benefits to, to this. Why are we talking about licenses as opposed to registration? Very simply put, this can be done with our current staff. This is still going to be an undertaking for Jana, but you've seen the numbers. This is that important to us and we feel it's necessary to devote the resources there and which will hopefully, in the long run, years down the line, prevent us from having to hire more police officers. I mentioned the cost. It can, can quickly be implemented. If we got into a licensing situation, you're most likely looking at hiring a new employee as part of the two thousand fourteen budget process. At the earliest, under the best conditions, that person would start sometime in January. There's a learning curve there. It'd be almost a year before this process, under a licensing program is fully implemented. This, we can get this started fairly quickly. And selfishly, for the police department, in all honesty, I, everything we would want to see in a licensing ordinance, we've got here. It's the, it's the crime-free lease addendum, it's the crime-free multi-housing program. It's not a cure-all, I want to stress that. This program does not deal with the mold, it does not deal with the bedbugs. There are cities that have very strict licensing and crime-free lease addendums that still have plenty of homicides. So, it's important to stress that. However, I do think this is a good first step for the city and for the, for the police department. I touched on this a little bit, but again, all rental property owners must register their property with the police department. They'll have a hundred and eighty days to do that. We're realistic as well. We know that there, despite our best efforts, there, there are going to be a number of people who simply don't know about the ordinance. They become accidental renters and we will, once we identify those people, we will bring them into the, into the program. It's important to have that contact information for a responsible person on the property. And registration is free and as well, the crime-free multi-housing training is provided in-house. Violations are a misdemeanor, like all city ordinances. However, we feel these, these timelines are extremely reasonable despite, with the hundred and eighty days to register. Beyond that, you have an entire year and there's going to be plenty of training for you to pick from to attend Phase One. Phase Two, Phase Three, also within a year. I think that's extremely reasonable. It's also very important that, because so many communities put this training on, we will recognize Phase One certifications from other cities. Budget impact, there really isn't one. We'll shift some things around in the police department. Again, we, we see this as a, as a priority and a good move to, to better the community. Again, it's very important to us. Properly implemented over time, again, I think it'll, it'll reduce the need for, for future officers, hopefully. There is a current need. We have a significant amount of rental property in the city. I think this ordinance addresses key issues, at least from the police department's perspective. It's, I think it's extremely reasonable and fair. I've read a lot of other ordinances from other cities. Jana's done a lot of research too. I know Michael's read a lot of other ordinances. I think that what we've proposed here is extremely fair and nowhere near as far-reaching as some of, some of these other cities go. The results in the past have been measurable and positive. There's no reason to think that these won't be positive and measurable as well. And overall, I, I think this is just going to have a positive impact on the community. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions or I'm sure there are folks here that would like to be heard on the subject too.
Thank you, Chief. For any questions first. Counselor Lehman.
Mayor, I sat down with the chief and I had probably ten questions that he answered for me prior to this meeting. The one that I neglected to ask and didn't come up until just now. Hello, we saw the stats on, on the impacts of this program. The question that comes to mind is, do we know if that riffraff moves to other parts of them communities? Or does it just cease or move out altogether?
One of the comments that we received over the years from property managers specifically, because they're the ones that really have their finger on the pulse of what's going on in the units. A source of frustration that they've expressed to us at the police department is that not everybody is required to do crime-free multi-housing. They will work their tail off and get a problem person like John Doe out of their unit and he moves a block down the road. So, and there is, let's call it what it is, we're displacing this. If you have an active property manager, there is some displacement there.
But, under the, Mayor, if I can continue, under the crime-free lease addendum, the next place then could use the background information to deny a lease?
They could. They, they could. That's part of any, any business background check. It's a credit check, I assume. It's checking references and so forth. I think from if they're paying their rent on time or, you know, did they have a marijuana growl operation in their, in their...
So, in an extreme case, John Doe's got fifty offenses against him in the last year at this apartment building, gets kicked out, goes down a block. That one picks him up, we might want to send that one back through the training at that point?
That would, at least we would have a contact at that complex and that we could engage them and work with them to, to solve that problem.
Other questions? Counsel Wadding.
If we went to more of a licensing rather than a registration kind of program, wouldn't we be doing this anyway? Wouldn't this be the precursor to that, getting everybody registered? And so, this is kind of like the start of possibly going towards that anyway?
It can be seen as that. I don't see too many cities out there, maybe Jim, you know of a, of a few, but there are some cities with registration. Most of them have more of the full license. Excuse me, single-family home and, and multi-building complexes. They, the ones I've read are, are the full gamut of everything. There are a few registrations out there. But, does this go far enough, in my opinion? No, but again, it's a first step. I think it's reasonable, it's doable, and it's doable with current staff.
If I can continue on.
Please.
As Counselor, Member Lehman mentioned, we, we had a conversation and answered, answered a lot of questions of mine too. But let's bring Jana out. Let's have her answer some questions.
I'm told she wasn't going to have to talk.
If we do some of this training, Jana, are you prepared to do this training on nights and weekends and?
Holidays.
Well, maybe not holidays, but.
Yep, I'm prepared to do it on weekends and then just flex my schedule to accommodate that. I'd like to offer the trainings kind of on different days to accommodate all the apartment managers and owners, kind of what works best for them, so.
This is nothing new. This is like an international crime prevention program started, I think, in Arizona. But most of the cities have, countless cities have this already. Is that correct?
Yep, most of my peers have this program already in place and they offer the training as well. So, that's another great avenue since we are accepting other trainings. If someone is not able to come to my training, they're able to go to any in this, in this area and they're offered several times a month in the surrounding areas as well.
You've been trained in all this. Have you given the class?
No, I have not and my training is actually going to be June thirteenth. So, that will be my day of training. But I know all my peers would be more than willing to help me. I've, the Chaska person who does my position has also offered to sit in and help me with my first couple of classes.
Good, good. This is, this is kind of the watered-down version. Is it, is there any other cities that have a version that's similar to just this registration kind of thing? Or is it a little more expanded?
Apple Valley's is probably the, the one that we originally grabbed in terms of registration and looked at. Theirs doesn't go as far as ours does. I think it's essential that we have some teeth behind this. Otherwise, this is just going to be symbolic and there's going to be absolutely no, no backbone, no, no push to drive folks to the, the crime-free multi-housing training. We also have people other than Jana trained for that at the police department and I failed to mention this, but part of getting people engaged here too is we have quarterly crime prevention meetings with our property managers and hopefully we can, we should do that with Savage and hopefully we can bring more people into the fold there too.
If I can ask one more.
Go for it, you're on a roll.
I'm on a roll. Now, of the licensing program, that would be more Mr. Leaks' department and separate from, from you guys. You'd probably do some more of the enforcement of that, or how would that work?
It would fall mainly into, into Michael's lap in terms of inspecting the inside of residence and looking for those code violations.
Members of the council, Chief, I'd, I'd just add, and the chief touched on this in general terms. City has, the city has a substantial number of rental units. Based on two thousand eleven Met Council information, there are about two thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven residential units which are rental. That's single-family on up. And as the chief indicated, most of the communities, at least in the metro area, certainly those I've looked at, that do have licensing ordinances, license everything from those single-family houses on up that are rented. If we were to have one new position to accomplish that, they'd do a lot of running. They'd have to inspect about eleven rental units every day throughout the course of a year and then cycle back. So, it's a fairly substantial base of rental units that would have to be inspected. Obviously, some days there'd be more, some days there'd be fewer. But I think it's important if the council has interest in talking about that further or looking at it after this program has been put in place, that we talk as well with Finance Director about the finance issues. So, we're probably not talking about just a new staff person, but also those things that would support the staff person in that job vehicle to get from place to place. And there are apparently some fairly substantial limitations the legislature was nice enough to put on cities this year in terms of their levy increases. So, we need to factor that in with the other things that the city council has done in the last year or so.
Thank you.
Other questions? Counsel Lehman.
And this is probably for our crime prevention gal. The, when you get to the training, and I asked the chief this question in my conversations, but one of the questions I asked, when they, the property owner or the manager does the background checks, it's, in my mind, it's probably pretty important that that person doesn't share that information with other tenants. Meaning that this tenant applies and has this kind of a background, that maybe that property owner doesn't share that information with another tenant, so then you get kind of tenants at each other. I, I'd be curious to know if that's trained in that course.
We do talk about applicant screening and the benefits of that, but also, we ask an attorney to come in, which the owners really like that because they get an opportunity to ask the attorney questions. And I actually would like to talk to the attorney that we bring in first and let them know what our concerns are for Shakopee specifically. So, that's definitely something we could have our attorney talk about, the legal ramifications of something like that.
Very good.
Other questions? I've got a couple with regard to the reciprocity. How is that determined with other communities? Is it just, is there a standard crime prevention program that everybody uses or how does that work?
Yes, as, as we mentioned, the, the crime prevents, crime-free multi-housing, that program is a national program. It did originate in, in Arizona and there's a core curriculum that is taught.
Okay, so then.
Shakopee ties ours a little bit, but it'll, it'll.
I like that new word.
But I think it's real important in, in terms of getting buy-in from people who, who own and rent units throughout the metro area that we recognize those certifications as well. And if somebody isn't able to attend one of the many that we're going to hold, they can go to Chaska or they can go to Minneapolis.
That was my biggest concern is that, so they're someone who has a few properties in Shakopee and a lot of properties all over the metro or whatever it is. They don't have to come and sit for eight hours through our program and they've always been through it? And they just have to fill out the paperwork then, is the way it works?
Correct. They have to, they have to show us the certification that they get from Phase One. And I'll add again on, on that Phase One, because we do have owners who live out of state. In fact, we've got somebody in our police department whose brother lives in, lives out of the country, but he owns in Shakopee and rents it out. He can designate a property manager and then the manager can get that training. So, it's one or the other has to happen.
Okay, perfect. I, I'm a big fan of doing this. I appreciate all the work you've done on it. I think it will really help with, if we pass it, it will help with the problem properties that we have across the city that you and I have talked multiple times about over the last year and a half, where we can't get at the owner, whoever it is, to figure out who is responsible for those issues and hold someone accountable for that to be done. So, thank you for your work on this. Any questions? Counsel Wadding.
One follow-up a little bit to your point. The International Crime Prevent, Crime Free Association, they have a license program. Are we licensed to use that program or is ours so different that we don't have to buy their licensing?
Yeah, we already have that.
We do.
We've had officers go through that training in the past. So, we, we have all that, all that licensing already.
Okay, thank you.
And will the classes be held in multiple languages or interpreters there for our first community or how do we handle that?
I don't know about different languages. We have training material that we have in multiple languages that we can use to, to assist there. In terms of attorney and content, we would do our best to accommodate whatever language issue does come up.
Right. I hope we do because that'll make it more successful. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Chief, I just noticed something. The requirement to go to the Phase Two and Phase Three, is that on three or more units or four or more units?
Four or more.
Then we, then we need to change subdivision eight C. It does say it's also a misdemeanor for any residential property owner or manager of three or more. That should be four or more, correct?
Correct.
Yep, I'll have to talk to the attorney who drafted this.
Any further questions from council? All right, thank you. I know there are folks in the audience who would like to speak on this item. Anyone like to talk? Yes, come on up. Come on up to the microphone.
Where's your interpreter?
Yeah, she's coming. And please, oh, that one. You need to sign in over on there with your name and address, please.
Hello again.
Ah, hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Maria y soy, nosotros tenemos un consejo de padres hispanos.
Hi, good evening. My name is Maria and I'm part of an advisory committee here of Hispanic parents.
Nosotros creamos este consejo porque queremos aprender, ayudar y trabajar con ustedes para un mejor futuro.
We built this committee because we want to work together and get to know you better, to work for a better future together.
Para nuestra comunidad.
For our community.
Y la pregunta que yo tenía para el oficial de policía, usted ya la hizo por mí, era si todo lo.
The question I had for the officer, for the chief, you already kind of answered, asked that.
Si el programa que ellos estaban ofreciendo lo iban a tener en español.
If this proposal is going to be offered in Spanish.
It won't take long, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, to reach out to other communities too and see if they provide the training in, in different languages. So, we'll, we'll check our resources and see.
Perfect. Thank you.
What can we do to help?
I think support the ordinance, I think, first and foremost, but if adopted. if adopted, it's important to have active property managers. I mean, that's, that's key.
We're here for that today as a community. To support you and to work together with you.
Very good.
Gracias, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you again, everyone, for being here. Yes, sir, come on up.
He's a regular now.
Yes. Interpreter.
Se la pintó aquí.
Oh, perdón.
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Martín Álvarez.
My name's Martín Álvarez.
Y yo represento la comunidad hispana.
We're representing the Hispanic community.
Uh, ah, ¿se acuerdan la, eh, la sesión anterior?
For our last conversation.
Que hablamos de, quisiera poner, recordar tres puntos que hablamos.
I wanted to see if we can touch, touch upon the last three things we want to talk about.
Acerca de, de, ah, del, de alcohol, droga y pandillas.
Which is the alcohol, drugs and gangs.
Ya que nuestra comunidad, nosotros los hispanos, tenemos este problema muy serio.
Since in our community, the Hispanic community takes this very seriously.
Entonces, este, hoy hacemos presente mi comunidad, que está aquí presente, tenemos líderes.
So we are the community, here the leaders are present.
Líderes en la fe.
In faith.
Tenemos líderes, este, de negocios.
Business.
Y tenemos padres de familia.
And parents.
Con el grupo que queremos trabajar.
The group that we're working together.
Porque, eh, según las estadísticas, eh, nosotros, el hispa, nosotros los hispanos tenemos el ochenta por ciento del problema de alcohol, droga y pandillas.
Because according to the facts, we have eighty percent of problems with alcohol, drugs and gangs.
Entonces queremos trabajar con ustedes, queremos trabajar mano a mano.
So we want to work hand in hand with you.
Hombro a hombro.
And shoulder to shoulder.
Verdad, para, para darles un perfil a nuestros hijos.
To get a better profile.
Darles una calidad de vida.
A good quality of life.
En la cual es, ellos se han desviado.
Which has been shifted currently.
Ah, una de las cosas que me preocupan mucho.
One of the things that I'm very concerned.
Ah, cómo estas personas están haciendo de nuestros hijos.
It's this people taking our children.
Ah, cómo los están induciendo tan, a tan temprana edad.
That they're getting induced at a young age.
Y una de las cosas que me ha llamado mucho la atención.
And what has caught my attention.
Que, eh, ha llegado a mis oídos.
That's made it to our ears.
Que hay personas que están, ah, reclutando a nuestros niños y jóvenes.
There's people recruiting our younger children.
Para que ellos vendan droga.
To sell drugs.
Y que si no, los golpean.
Or get beat up.
Entonces queremos trabajar con ustedes.
So we want to work together.
Eh, y una de mi, del, de las propuestas.
My proposal.
Me, me gustaría hacerles esta propuesta.
I would like to offer that to you.
Que si fuera posible, eh, reunirnos así como estamos ahorita.
Can we get together like we are doing today?
Para que ustedes conozcan mi comunidad.
For you to know us as a community.
Hacer la invitación a toda mi comunidad.
We invite our community.
Y que conozcan a cada uno de ustedes.
And get to know you.
Y que estamos dispuestos a trabajar con ustedes.
We're willing to work together.
Para salvar nuestra comunidad.
To save our community.
Y no tan solo el pueblo hispano.
Not just the Hispanic.
Sino las demás razas.
In general.
Porque este mal cada día se acrecienta más.
Because the days coming close.
Cada día hay testimonios.
Every day we see more testimony.
De tantas cosas desagradables.
With a lot of ungrateful.
Por estos tres males.
For these three things affecting our community.
These three things affecting our community. Entonces quería ver si había la posibilidad.
So I wanted to ask for the possibility.
Presentar a mi comunidad.
To introduce us as.
En un lugar libre.
In a free.
Claro, aprovechando el tiempo de verano.
In a free place, especially taking advantage, the summer's coming up.
Y que yo pueda reunir toda mi comunidad con ustedes.
And that we as a community can come together with you.
Y que ustedes lo puedan conocer.
And that get to know you.
Gracias por la oportunidad.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Y yo creo, yo creo que tenemos el poder.
I think we can.
Para cambiar vidas.
Change lives.
Para dar un estilo de vida.
I think we have the power to change the style.
Para cambiar la mentalidad.
The mentality.
De nuestros hijos.
Of our children.
De nuestros jóvenes.
Our youth.
De nuestros adultos.
And our adults.
Si nos unimos juntos.
If we come together.
Yo creo que vamos a recibir, a, a recibir resultados positivos.
I think we can have good positive results.
Pero necesitamos trabajar juntos.
Well, we need to work with you.
Porque esto es serio.
This is serious.
Por lo que llega a nuestros, nuestros, nuestra comunidad.
What's reaching our community.
Igual que yo estamos muy preocupados.
We are very concerned.
Por lo que está pasando.
With what's going on.
Gracias por escucharme.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to speak on the item?
Would you like me to sign in first?
Yes, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Lisa Peelin, and I'm here tonight representing the Minnesota Multi-Housing Association. Mayor, I'm the person who sent you an email. Uh, we are a nonprofit trade association of rental property owners. Uh, very responsible property owners. We're statewide. We were founded in nineteen sixty-seven. Uh, we have members, uh, not only all over the state, including Shakopee, but members who own or manage properties of all sizes, from multi-building complexes down to duplexes and everything in between. Uh, I am the Director of Municipal Affairs for the Minnesota Multi-Housing Association, so it is my job to represent our members before city councils. Uh, and it's been my pleasure to, uh, work with so far, uh, the chief and Jana, and it's been a, a very positive experience. Mostly what we are about is education. If I can just take a moment. We put on over a hundred classes a year to help, uh, property owners and managers to be the best they can be. Our classes are available whether or not you're a member. They cost more if you're not. Uh, our signature publication is called The Fundamentals of Rental Property Management in Minnesota. Uh, and there's a two-hour companion class, and this is a basic management class, and it does include, if I can find it, a copy of the Crime-Free Drug-Free Lease Addendum, which I wanted to show you. We also create and sell a number of products. Uh, if you're going to own and operate rental property, you need a quality lease, you need a rental application form, you need move-in, move-out forms, you need all kinds of addendums. Uh, you need, I'm sorry to say, bedbug inspection forms. We sell them all, again, both to members and non-members. They're quality products, uh, written by, uh, professionals and reviewed by our legal committee. So I just wanted to introduce myself to you this evening. And, uh, one, if I may, if I may try to answer your question, council member, about not sharing background check information, it's highly illegal. There's, uh, the Federal Data Privacy Act. You can't share that information with anyone. So that's, uh, that's covered.
It's important that the people at your training understand that.
Yes, I appreciate that, because you could get in all kinds of trouble for doing that. Um, uh, our members, by and large, we don't ever support new ordinances. This wouldn't be the case in Shakopee, but in many other cities. Rental housing is so highly regulated that our responsible members sometimes feel like they can't take another breath without having another layer of regulation imposed on them. The best we generally do is to not oppose it, and our members don't oppose, uh, the basic premises of this ordinance. Many of them, if not most, already use a Crime-Free Drug-Free Lease Addendum. They have taken phase one crime-free training and many other classes. Uh, they do not only criminal background checks, but most of them, uh, much broader background check, which checks for a whole number of other things. Um, and I'm forgetting the other components, but whatever, that, that they, we do them. So we don't object to the basic tenants. Uh, I would also ask that if, in fact, down the road, you'd like to take a look at something broader, or maybe what's your next step, we would love to work with you. Our goal is to really partner with cities in such a way we believe we share a, a common goal of quality rental housing. And we'd like to work with you so that the needs of the city are met in a way that isn't unduly burdensome to responsible owners. So-
Thank you.
That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm glad you were able to, uh, meet with Jana and the chief, when I wasn't able to be there. Sorry about that.
They were very receptive and it was a pleasure to work with them. Thank you.
Wonderful, good. Anyone else? All right, Councilman Lehman.
Mayor, I think it's important for those here and at home to understand that this, these problems aren't just exclusive to rental housing. It was probably fifteen, sixteen years ago, four chiefs later or prior, and, uh, multiple mayors before, that I pioneered one of the first neighborhood watch areas in the town because of issues in single-family areas. The point, I guess I'm trying to say to the fine speaker that spoke to us is it's up to everybody in this community to be the eyes and ears in whatever fashion or form they can to help the police department and each other, uh, in the community, and you do that in multiple ways. Whether it's crime-free multi-housing, or, or neighborhood watch, or just, you know, being, being responsible and seeing something and, and calling the police and letting them know. It's, so I, I don't want it to be viewed as this is just a problem in these areas because society's ilks are broad. And it's kind of up to all of us in all different ways to address them. And, and Shakopee has, has been proactive in the past. I'm sure that it will be in the future, as, as they always have been with multiple programs. So you know, I think we've done a very good job over the years with our, our national watch, our neighborhood watch program with the expansion that we've seen over the years. Geez, it started out with maybe two or three back in my early years of, of putting one together under, I believe it was, uh, Mayor Laurent at the time, and John Brecky after that. And now I, you know, it's probably up in the sixties, seventies or more. So it's going the right direction. It's just that, uh, we need, we need everybody, like you said, to participate. And in order for that to happen, we have to have the apartment complexes on board. We have to have the neighborhood watch people on board. We have to have the businesses on board, so on and so forth. So we're doing a pretty good job, and, uh, we appreciate your partnership.
Anything else? Councilwoman Whiting?
Well, first off, I'd like to thank Martin and Maria for stepping forward and thank you for the invitation to, uh, get to know your community a little bit better and, uh, meet some of the leaders of, of that community. Um, I think this is important because we've had, the, the stats, of course, prove that it's lowering crimes. So I think we need to move forward in a way that at least we know who those landlords are, and this registration will go a long way to help find out who the people to contact in whether it be crime issues or, uh, who do we contact if the grass is, you know, ten inches long. Um, this is a start. I, it, it could go a lot farther. Um, Mr. Leaks spoke about the, um, financial restraints that may come up in that case. So I haven't heard any opposition to this kind of program. We have thirty rental units already, or, uh, I think he said thirty percent was it, um, that are already involved in it. And, um, so I, I see it not as a huge issue. The issue might be for those property managers to, I have to go take that class. But, uh, they get it over with, they get their certificate, um, hopefully they utilize that and, uh, do what they can for renting to people. So, um, I can see where some people are reluctant to go this way, but I, I see it favorable.
Thank you. Before we get much further, I'd like to have a motion on the floor, if we can have a motion. Councilor Clay?
I'll offer ordinance number eight seventy. Uh, ordinance for the city of Shakopee, adding section six point two nine to the Shakopee City Code regarding residential, resid- residential rental property registration.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it with a friendly amendment noting subdivision eight, section C, be modified as four or more units.
Are you saying it by Councilman Lehman? Is that accepted, Councilwoman Clay?
Sure.
All right, any further discussion on the item? Councilman Lehman?
Mayor, I think the important part here, not only is it for the training for those that operate the, uh, complexes, is for the, the owner and managers to understand what they're leasing to. And I think in a lot of circumstances, they may not know. And it might be ignorance, but at least now the process is gonna let them know. And if they don't know how to decipher that information, they've got the resources with Jenna and, uh, Police Department and so on to, to better explain that information.
Exactly. Very good. Anything else? Seeing no further discussion, others in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you very much, Chief and Jana. Um, we put F-one on consent, so we'll move on to item number eight. Councilmember reports. Let's start with Councilwoman Whiting.
Uh, just one item. Uh, Thursday, May thirtieth, I attended the Met Council Thrive twenty forty listening session at the Scale Regional Training Facility. The goal was to communicate ideas and thoughts on various topics like affordable housing, water, uh, water resources, transit and land use, economic development, and I was able to lend my thoughts to the water resource, uh, sub-discussion and, uh, the transit discussion. Uh, over sixty people were there, and according to the Met Council rep, Gary Van Ille, this is one of the largest attended listening sessions that they've had. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Clay?
Thank you. The Utilities Commission, um, are, have still suspended, uh, flushing until the weather starts drying up a little bit. Um, our water usage is down about ten percent.
I thought you meant toilets there.
Nope, no.
Yeah.
Fire hydrant flushing.
All right.
Water usage is down about ten percent from previous years, as you might imagine. They've been working, re, repairing and doing standard maintenance on, uh, some wells. Eleven, number eleven is back in service. They're gonna start working on number twelve. The, um, at the last meeting, they did pass three resolutions establishing trunk water charges for three of our city parks. Uh, the Ambassador Park and Acne Park basically have very minimal, uh, water service needs, and there was a zero-dollar amount for those, uh, trunk water charges. And for the third park, Riverside Fields, which does have bathroom facilities, there's only like a three hundred and eighty-three-dollar trunk charge. It seemed pretty reasonable. Squirrels have been added again. There were four minor outages caused by, and then one at midnight. So now they're, we have stealth squirrels in the middle of the night chewing on our, our stuff.
Turkey for sale.
Yeah, yeah. Um, probably the biggest thing to announce is that, uh, the Utilities Commission now finally has available the ability for customers to make their payments via credit cards, debit cards, or e-checks. They'll accept Visa, Discover Card, MasterCard, and American Express.
Online?
Uh, I think, yeah, online or, uh, that little gizmo they have set up in the entryway or the hallway there.
Nice.
People have been asking for it for quite a while. Um, evidently, it's a lot of work and trouble to get something like that set up, more than I would have ever imagined, and they've been working on it for a number of years. Um-
There it is. Online, go pay.
Yeah. So that should do it for my report.
Councilman Lehman?
Well, if we could just get Scott County up to the twentieth, twenty-first century, we'll be in business, Mayor. Um, Derby Days, Shakopee Derby Day, shakpederbydays.com is the website. They've got the, uh, registration and stuff updated on the site, so you can do that right online. Um, donations, volunteers, donations, volunteers, donations, volunteers.
So what do you want?
The parade app is online.
Yep, the parade app is online too, yep.
I think that's the only way you can get it, or some, they want, they prefer.
Well, yeah, they prefer it that way. But you can also, yeah, you can do your signup and stuff too.
Perfect. Councilman Truman?
On Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, um, Mr. Leake and myself attended the Scott Communities Transit Review Board Meeting. And this was the second meeting where we heard from potential, um, transit provider that we are considering merging operations with, um, prior Lake and Shakopee operations of Blue Express. Um, so we heard from Southwest Transit on Wednesday. Um, their executive director, Len Simich, was with us. And the conversation was much like the MVTA conversation. Um, you know, I guess the things that stand out to me that would be the differences in terms of, um, combining operations would be, um, learning more about their kind of culture and the way that they function. I think that's, would be a major difference. And then the other difference is really opportunity for different connection points. Um, Southwest Transit, of course, having the LRT, um, coming in the next few years into Eden Prairie. That, of course, is a different- That, of course, is a different type of, um, potential connection for our users. And then the other piece that, um, he spoke about, I asked him questions about direct service to the U of M and, um, those type of connections. So they, they do have a lot of direct service to the U. And they also are working with, um, the Target corporate, um, headquarters that are in Brooklyn Park on some direct service there, and some other connections within Bloomington. So, it does just take us into a different geography in terms of what the opportunity would be for our writers, um, to have those connections. So at our meeting, the end of June, um, just as a reminder, this board is an advisory board. We don't make any decisions. So the group now needs to kinda come back together and have a discussion about what sort of recommendation we would make to the county and to the cities on how to proceed. So that'll be next. Did I miss anything, Mr. Leake?
Um, just one thing I would add. Um, I think both the Prior Lake City Council and some on our council were interested in having the TRB here from Metro Transit, and so at our transit planning team meeting this Thursday, we'll be talking about, um, plans to do that, which we hope will be at the June meeting. So maybe two meetings before we have that discussion about what you all have heard.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Um, alright, back on the twenty-second, got to go to the ribbon cutting for Speed Dog, where I had supper tonight, in case anybody cares. They've got very good Chicago dogs. Um, but Speed Dog is a reopened restaurant in Shakopee done by Rar and is really good, uh, for anyone who needs, um, new restaurants in Shakopee, so that is good. Um, on the twenty-third, attended the Historic Society's fundraiser and opening of their new, um, my brain is not functioning, sorry.
Exhibit.
Thank you. Um, over there and was very good. Uh, and the twenty-fourth, got to judge the, um, uh, leadership in, uh, diversity in the Shakopee High School. Um, a bunch of different kids from all diverse backgrounds had a talent show, and it was phenomenal. They were really good, yeah. It, this is my second year being able to judge it, and it was really good. Um, so had fun there. And then, uh, twenty-seventh was Memorial Day. Uh, attended the, uh, ceremony out at the Shakopee Midwak and Sue Community, and then, um, spoke at the Memorial Day Ceremony here, unveiling the new nameplate for, um, Hergot Memorial Drive. And that was very well received by quite a few people out there. Also, thank you to, um, VFW, all the businesses, and Councilwoman Lehman for the flags along one oh one. That was great to have out there this year. Um, again, on the twenty-ninth, it's been a busy couple of weeks. Um, we had ribbon cutting for the new Smart Play Spot at the Scott County, um, Library here in Shakopee, which was, uh, built with donations, uh, from local businesses, as well as a grant from the, uh, legacy funds, um, put together by the, uh, Children's Museum. And so it was a, it's a really, really great, um, amenity to have in the library for kids, and it's very, um, trying to remember what Chief Take called it, shako- shockatized. There we go. It is a shockatized exhibit, um, that has, uh, the Home Street Bridge and other, uh, um, other, uh, Shakopee-centric, uh, things. And so it's a very good, um, new addition to the library over there. Um, as well, went to Met Council, meeting with, uh, Councilwoman Whiting, and I believe that is all that I've got. So, um, lots of stuff going on for summer, especially Park and Rec, um, with Huber Park, that direction. Um, then we go to other business. Anybody have any other business to add to, even Councilor Clay?
Yeah, it's been brought to my attention that we've got flags up and down First Avenue, but we don't have any flags on the two blocks of Main Street here in Central Business District, which is definitely not a shockatistic way of doing things. I mean, if we're gonna have flags, we especially want them down here in the Central Business District to complement our flower baskets, if nothing else. Is there any way we can get that accomplished? Get some flags on, down here?
Can we get flowers down the rest of First Avenue?
Yeah, no, flowers, it sounds like a compromise.
Yes, we will look into it. I was also gonna suggest that we get them from the other. Yeah.
We'll look at it.
Mr. Looney will look into it. Anyone else in the other business? Councilwoman Lehman?
Motion to adjourn Tuesday, June eighteenth.
Do we have a second? Second. So, any Councilwoman Whiting, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passed unanimously. We are adjourned at eight eleven, four minutes before quarter after eight.